I'm going to open the June 18, 2024 special meeting of the Gloucester City Council. The public meeting, this public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. You are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications, which there will be none tonight, to be recognized. So tonight, there will be no oral communication since it is a special meeting. Also, I'd just like to announce that there's only one camera that's working this evening, and that's the camera that's on us. So there won't be any, there may not be any viewing if anyone is speaking on the podium, you'll just see the back of their head. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. If there's no objection, I'm going to skip the nondiscrimination statement from the city councilors because we, this is a special meeting. And I would like to announce the councilors who are here. We have councillor, Ward one councillor Scott Memhard, councillor at large Jeff Worthley, Ward three councillor Marjorie Grace, councillor at large Jason Grow, Ward two councillor Dylan Benson, councillor at large Valerie Gilman, and Ward four councillor Frank Majota. And city staff who is here tonight is, we have Jill Cahill online, and we have Kenny Costa with us. And with us, we have Grace Poirier, our city clerk. I don't see anyone else.
We also have our CFO Connor.
Ward five councillor Sean Nolan is also here due to the heat. He is staying at home so that he can participate. I believe that that is it. Flag salute and moment of silence. Frank, you are the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which exists in one nation under God, justice for all.
A short, short moment, folks, sorry. And also in attendance, we have school committee member Jeremy McKean and school committee chair Kathy Clancy. All right, next order of business.
Approval of minutes from previous council and standing committee meetings. These would be the FY25 budget review meeting minutes.
Second, move to adopt? Motion made by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Worthley, to adopt the BNF minutes, the meeting of the whole. All those in favor?
It's a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, sorry.
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Aye.
Grow?
Yes.
Memhard?
Yes.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Yes.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Council vote the adoption of the FY25 budget.
And our city auditor is going to read the motions for us.
I'm going to read the motions until I get worn out, and then Kenny's going to take over.
Okay. Amend that.
To begin, I have opening remarks on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee, which is myself as chair, councillor Tony Gross, vice chair councillor Jeff Worthley. And we had a, we've worked hard together and long with the city staff, and I am pleased to present the recommendations of our Budget and Finance Committee for the city's budget for fiscal year 2025, which begins on July 1, 2024, right around the corner. First, spending in the general fund amounts to $139,997,358, of which $58,488,897 is set aside for our schools. Second, spending on the enterprise funds amounts to $20,815,122. That includes the Water Sewer Dorothy Talbot Rink and Waterways Enterprise Funds. And third, the spending in the Community Preservation Act Fund amounts to $940,000. Fourth, spending limits authorizations for city and school revolving funds amounts to an additional $3,196,358. And overall, spending in the general fund, enterprise funds, and Community Preservation Act Funds amounts to $161,751,480. Spending limit authorizations for city and school revolving funds amounts to $3,196,385 for a grand total in the amount of $164,948,865. Big numbers. But we're a big city. We're a city of some 30,000 people, covering 42 square miles. We have 60 miles of beautiful coastline and beyond. Between all of our city services and departments, we rely on over 1,100 skilled municipal employees to keep our city running smoothly. We hereby extend our appreciation for the professional work of Mayor Verga's team, in particular CAO Jill Cahill, CFO Treasurer Connor McCorcal, and our school committee and our school management team. This council appreciates our own staff's hard work in this process, particularly city auditor Kenny Costa, city clerk Grace Poirier, and Sheri White, our clerk of committees. Thank you all. All city department heads carefully explained and defended their appropriation requests. They did this first to the mayor's team, and then to us at the Budget and Finance Committee and Committee of the Whole, line by line, dollar by dollar. It is a careful and deliberative process, making efforts at every step to be open, to be public, to be accessible, and to respect the needs of the city and the hard-earned financial support provided by our city's taxpayers. Our fiscal stewardship means that our independent auditors, our bond rating agencies, and the Massachusetts Department of Revenue has consistently positive reviews and acceptances that have resulted in the past and we anticipate for the future. The Budget and Finance Committee appreciates that this has been an extremely tough budget year for the mayor's office, difficult to bring into balance, due particularly in part to the continuing uncertainty of the economy that includes inflationary concerns and rising interest rates, as well as significant debt service that remains on the city's books. Our future city budgets will remain a challenge, in part due to the one-time funding sources of school federal grants of elementary and secondary school emergency relief for Esser, E-S-S-E-R, one, two, and three, for a total of $6.8 million, with a grant period ending this September 30, 2024, the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, grant funding of $23 million with an obligated due date of December 31, 2024, and our general fund free cash appropriations of $786,757 for subsequent year expenditures for the general fund and the sewer fund enterprise fund, and the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2025. And as reviewed by the CAO Jill Cahill and CFO Connor McCorcal, the department heads and the mayor's team, this budget, within constraints of our contractual obligations, already presents its own challenges. I would like to just touch on a few procedural matters. All the motions we put forward, these were all voted by the members of the Budget and Finance Committee, Tony Gross, vice chair, councillor Jeff Worthley, and myself. And for each department, the amount of personal services, ordinary maintenance, capital outlay, debt service, and any special transfers will be specified in a single motion as read by myself or the auditor Kenny Costa, with the exception of one department, the school department. Each line item will be considered to have been separately voted otherwise. The school department budget is a single motion that represents a bottom-line budget. And I will motion the vote. Vice Chair, Budget and Finance Committee councillor Tony Gross will second for the record unless he has recused himself for any particular vote. And upon the council roll call vote, I will announce the results of each vote. And that concludes my preamble.
Thank you. I'd also like to note that CFO Connor McCardle, McCorcal is, has also joined us via Zoom.
Going to follow the order of service, councillor Worthley had a request. Do you want to make that known?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that preamble. We have a number of motions, and two, the first two are relative to free cash. And in a brief conversation with our auditor today, it was suggested that potentially if we were to make a change on the second one, it would affect the first one. And so there's reason to take the second one first. Otherwise, we vote for the first one, and we maybe have to rescind that and undo it and redo it. So for, actually for ease and time, it would, there'd be some efficiency in taking the second one first, if that's okay.
Your suggestion.
Thank you for that suggestion.
It passes.
Yeah, okay. So the first motion I'll read is the fiscal year 2024 general fund free cash appropriation related to the fiscal year 2025 sewer enterprise budget.
Budget and Finance Committee recommendation on a motion by myself councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, one councillor Worthley opposed, to recommend that the city council appropriate in the amount of $175,000 from the general fund, undesignated fund balance, free cash, account number as noted, to the sewer enterprise fund, fund balance reserved for special purposes, account number as noted. The purpose of this appropriation from the general fund, undesignated fund balance slash free cash, is to stabilize the sewer enterprise fund user fees for fiscal year 2025, and I so move.
Motion made by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion.
Worthley.
Thank you. I voted against that then, and I'm going to do the same thing now for a very specific reason. So free cash is generated from all taxpayers, and the sewer enterprise fund is made up of a subset of that, including Rockport residents and Essex residents. Our job is to work for Gloucester residents, and as much as we, confirmed by Mike Hale today.
Use your microphone so we can hear you.
Well, go ahead, finish, and I'll ask a question.
Okay. So all sewer rate users are a subset of all taxpayers. So what we're doing is taking money that was generated from taxpayers and subsidizing the sewer rate users. This isn't prioritized or giving any preferential treatment to one group or another, but I think we should be using that money to benefit the entire city. And to save some money on the rate, I think the number that Connor shared was that the average rate user uses 95,000 gallons of water per year. That average also includes all of our commercial property owners, Gortons, no offense, Cape Pond Ice, golf courses, et cetera, et cetera. So we're subsidizing the entirety, and the difference, according to Connor, is $40 per average 95,000 gallon user. I would submit that the median is probably a lot lower than that, so the savings would be a lot lower than that. So for $25 to $30, we're putting $175,000 of general taxpayers' money into one subgroup. So that's why I voted against it. And after doing more research, I'm even more strongly against it. I'd like to advocate for that.
I address some of those points. I don't know how, they may, Rockport may pay a share, but, and Essex, but we have no water meters, so I don't know how they would measure the sewer rate. So I, I think that it's probably just a lump sum that they pay.
Well, their rates are based on something. Maybe it's based on our average, but according to DPW director Mike Hale, that unless this were coming from retained earnings of the sewer enterprise account, this is-
It all goes into the same. I understand that.
It essentially be subsidizing Rockport and Essex as well.
The businesses, as well as other homeowners who have wells and use it for certain things, they don't pay the sewer rate. Cape Pond Ice doesn't pay much of a sewer rate because of their, Gortons pays very little for their sewer rate. So this would have, you know, it's a little bit of a stretch to be putting those two big water users into this, because it doesn't affect them.
It wasn't designed by a stretch. I misunderstood that they don't pay a sewer rate separate from their water rate. That's my error.
Oh, they have to, because the amount of usage and-
That I didn't know.
Yes, absolutely.
They all have deduct meters.
Any of the businesses, the brewery, the distillery, any of those businesses, the coffee companies, the, you know, anything, it's the only, they have a separate meters for, for their manufacturing, separate from their sanitary use.
Same time, the taxes they pay are then going to subsidize the other rate payers, though.
Taxes the businesses pay?
And residents, yeah. And that's the thing I'm trying to say. Is there a better use of $175,000 of free cash that benefits the entire city? And that's, that's my case.
So what you're saying-
That's what Majota.
Yeah. So with this $175,000 divided by the entire state of Gloucester, the average user, average family household can save about $30 to $40 a year on water. No?
The average sewer rate user-
Which is still the average household, or?
No, for example, anybody in Magnolia doesn't pay a sewer rate. So they're paying taxes that then reduce the sewer rate for everybody else. So what I'm thinking is that that free cash would go into the general fund number above it, and then that could be money used for whatever the mayor decides. And it could be for holes in our budget this year. So I'd love to save people money, but in a year where we're talking about budget crises, I don't know why I'd be giving away taxes to subsidize sewer rate users.
$30 to $40 can, can help at the grocery store for, whether it's a minimal thing, where, you know, it's very tight for families, so $40 savings could go a long way, even if it's for the year. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Memhard.
I would just like to make the point that I think it's certainly a valuable discussion that councillor Worthley has raised. However, this is a little late in the game to be instituting a change to this discussed topic and to the administration's proposed recommendations, which are before us tonight.
I have to comment that this was brought up at BNF and did not meet with a favorable result. So this was, this was brought up earlier by councillor Worthley, I will grant him that, during our discussions at BNF. And councillor Memhard, myself, were not in favor of this move.
Ask a procedural question. And we've had this happen on zoning changes, ordinance changes. If there's a vote at committee, whether it's fair rule or split, there's still a chance to advocate for it at the full council level.
Absolutely. And you can change your vote. Absolutely. Oh, yeah. No, I didn't, I just wanted to speak up that this was, you know, since it was mentioned it was late in the game, that it had been brought up early.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Clerk?
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Gross?
A yes vote is to cut it out, right?
No, it's on the main motion.
Motion on the table is to approve as proposed in the administration's budget.
Okay. Yes. Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Nolan? I'm sorry, Memhard?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Worthley?
No.
The vote is eight in favor, one opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you. Next motion, councillor Memhard.
So we'll go back to the first item on the agenda before us, which is the fiscal year 2024 general fund free cash appropriation related to the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget. And Budget and Finance Committee's recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appropriate, appropriate in the amount of $611,757 from the general fund, undesignated fund balance, free cash, account number as noted, to the general fund, fund balance reserved for special purposes, account number as noted. And the purpose of this appropriation from the general fund, undesignated fund balance slash free cash, is to reduce the fiscal year 2025 tax levy, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion. Call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Councillor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
No.
The vote is eight in favor, one opposed. The motion passes.
And we're going to start with the departmental general fund budget appropriations. And the first is ourselves, Department 111, City Council. Budget and Finance recommend, on a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for the city council as follows. Personal services, $103,500. Ordinary maintenance, $37,400 for a departmental total, city council of $140,900, and I so move.
Motion made by councillor Memhard, seconded by councillor Grow. Discussion. Councillor Worthley.
Yes, I'd like to put a motion on the table to amend this by reducing it by $20,000. And then I'd like to explain why.
You do.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the ordinary maintenance portion of the city council budget from $37,400 to $17,400. Reduction of $20,000. I so move.
You have no second on the amendment, so it fails.
I just want to ask, where would you, where do you want to put, okay, I'll second it. I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Where are you looking to put this, this funding?
Thank you. So my goal is to, with some of these proposed cuts, to free up some money that the council decides to fill the gap or part of the gap that we have at the school department. And specifically on this motion, we have a line item of $30,000 for city audits. City audits are the responsibility of the council. Last year, we budgeted $30,000. At the end of the year, we gave it back because we couldn't spend, we couldn't find an audit to be done for only $30,000. The prior year, we budgeted $30,000. We gave it back because we can't find an audit that could be done for $30,000. In fact, the most recent quote for the smallest office was $150,000. So we're putting it in the budget again, and we're going to give it back. And I argue that if, we should be doing audits, and it needs a funding source, but this can't be at, we can't aggregate the money. So why don't we take that, take $20,000 of it and put it, you know, at the end of the day, we'll have a number we added up to and see if that's a difference to save, you know, part of a part-time position in the school. And as we go through this, we'll see a larger number. So that's the goal.
Councillor Majota.
You keep mentioning, and I don't want this to come across the wrong way, as I support Gloucester schools and everything they do. I have children here, I went to here. What you're proposing is to take $20,000 away from here to put into schools, but the city council itself cannot dictate where the money is going, correct? It's a yes or no preferably question.
The only department that the city council can direct where the money goes is the school department. As long as the school committee voted for a higher number than what the mayor proposed, it's the only-
And direct with how they use it.
Right. So what I'm saying, what councillor Worthley, is my question is a yes or no? If you can't, if you can't provide that, then-
Hang on, I just provided it with fact, okay?
I just-
Mass general law allows the city-
Can you please let me finish?
Well, you asked me the question.
I wasn't done. I'm going to, I'm going to ask you again. Can the city council itself dictate where the money goes?
The only department we can send the money to that's not recommended by the mayor is the school department. The only one. And that's what I'm trying to propose by mass general law.
Councillor Gilman.
Yes, I'm not going to support councillor Worthley's motion because I believe that there's an important reason why we've had that in the budget as a placeholder. It's because the city charter speaks of this, and we have made a commitment to look into the inspection department as the next department that we would like to, to do an audit on. And I think if at this point we get rid of this, then we missed the opportunity to implement a process that we've made a commitment to per the charter, and that administration was prepared to help us. And just because the first group that we checked into had a huge funding, it was over $100,000, I still don't think that it's in our best interest to, to remove this from the city council budget.
Thank you. Councillor Benson.
Councillor Worthley, could you explain, and maybe auditor, you could explain as well, you're saying like, we can, this specific money we can direct to the schools. We, it's not that we can tell them to spend it on X thing or X amount on something. Is that correct?
Yes.
And specifically to auditor Costa.
How about now?
I can hear you now. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So this department, it would, it would be a reduction, and then the school department would be, you know, voted, it would be required a two-thirds vote to increase. But the school department, if you remember, it's a bottom-line budget. So those funds cannot be directed towards salaries or ordinary maintenance or a capital purchase or a vehicle purchase. It's just adding to that bottom-line budget. And then that department can spend out those funds how they deem appropriate.
Fair. And then if I can have, then I have a follow-up question is, what is the risk? Is there any risk if we reduce this completely? Is there a risk?
Yeah. So the, the risk is, one, these funds were intended for an audit. So then at that point, there would be less of a chance of being able to carry out that audit. And then also, once you do get to the school department budget, it does require a two-thirds vote. And if the two-thirds vote, if it does not pass, then those funds go away. So the appropriation goes away, then the revenues would also need to be adjusted, would also need to be decreased as well, as we need a balanced budget.
With that cost, if, with that cost benefit analysis that you've just, just laid out for all of us, councillor Worthley, can you, like, with that risk, what do you, what do you say to that?
So I'm going to combine my answer to you with an answer to councillor Gilman's concern. First, I think we should be auditing all our departments as required by the charter. The last department that was suggested for an audit was legal department. I think there was three people in that office, and the quote that I received from Messinos was $150,000.
We understand that $30,000 will not cover it. I don't think we need to-
Right. But I think that when the quote was made, that we're going to take on now the, the inspectional services department.
Well, no, I don't, I don't think that, this council, this council has not decided to audit any department. So let's leave departments out of this conversation, please, because there is no, there is no, no motion or movement here to, to, to do any.
So if I could say in general, if we're going to, out of any departments that are larger than the three-person office, it's going to cost a lot more money. And I think we're talking about a 30 to 40-person department, which you count all the people that work in those departments. So we're going to be in the same situation in June of next year, where we're going to say, well, we didn't spend it, can't aggregate it, and we're going to send it back to the general fund. So what I'm hoping to do is, as we identify a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there, we get to a point where we have a larger sum, and the last vote we take is the school department budget. They voted for their budget, which I think is 2.1 million more.
Stick, stick to this.
Yeah. So to answer the question of what would we do with it, I'm going to recommend, and we'll see where it goes, that the additional funds that we find would go to the school department. As far as your question about the risk, the risk would simply be, we wouldn't have $30,000 to perform an audit that costs $150,000, but that risk is there at any dollar number. So I don't see it as a, a cost to the council if we're not going to find that money otherwise.
My, yeah, my real question, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's a couple of things that would address this situation that doesn't, we should, in the next, this during- the next, this during this tax fiscal year, set up a stabilization account for this money so that it can be. And then also speak to the mayor's office about backfilling a little bit if there's any free cash, and that would make this thing, but if we, if we steal from it, it's going to be nothing again. So we don't, we have to start somewhere, and this year is a good place to start. Also, I don't want you to take out of the, the view that the city has cut $2 million worth of services to the, to the constituents in this city. So just giving the money to the schools may not necessarily be the best benefit for the taxpayers. I just, just want to put it on an equal scale. Thank you.
So I put a motion forward on reducing the budget by 20,000. It was seconded by Council Benson.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay, this is the, this is the roll call on the amendment.
Yeah.
Councilor Majota? Councilor Benson?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
No.
Councilor Grace?
Yes.
Councilor Gross?
No.
Councilor Grow? Councilor Nolan? I'm sorry, Councilor Memhard?
No.
Councilor Nolan?
No.
Councilor Worthley?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three opposed. I'm sorry, three in favor, six opposed. The motion fails. So now you're back to the main motion.
The main motion is the City Council, main motion that was made. Would you like to, does anybody need a refresher, or we? Nope. Okay. Call the roll.
Councilor Majota?
Yes.
Councilor Benson?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Grace?
Yes.
Councilor Gross?
Aye.
Councilor Grow?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Aye.
Councilor Nolan?
Aye.
Councilor Worthley?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you. Next motion, Councilor Memhard.
Department 121, Executive City Mayor. Budget and Finance recommends that the City Council, we voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for the Executive City Mayor Office as follows. Personal Services, $408,157. Ordinary Maintenance, $174,500. For a departmental total for the mayor's office of $582,657, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
The next department is Department Number 135, the Office of the City Auditor. On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for the City Auditor as follows. Personal Services, $386,979. Ordinary Maintenance, $86,986 for a departmental total for the auditor of $473,965, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Sweating it over there, Kenny. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Aye.
Was that God?
Might as well be.
Our next department before, for us in the evening's agenda is Department 138, the Purchasing Department. And on a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Gross, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for purchasing as follows. Personal Services, $171,525. Ordinary Maintenance, $272,350. For a departmental total, purchasing of $443,875, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Department 141, Assessors. On a motion by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for the Assessor's Office as follows. Personal Services, $486,175. Ordinary Maintenance, $79,881 for a departmental total for the Assessor's Office, $566,056, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is our Department 145, the Treasurer Collector's Office. Budget and Finance, on a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for the Treasurer Collector as follows. Personal Services, $665,613. Ordinary Maintenance, $219,375. And debt service, $30,000 for a departmental total for Treasurer Collector of $914,988, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion.
Thank you, Councilor.
Sorry.
So I just want Councilors to be reminded that in this particular budget, legal services were cut back 15,000. Purchase of services were cut back 5,000. A fiscal analyst, the department cut back 90,000, opting not to fill a vacancy in the Treasurer's Office. The fiscal analyst supported the CFO of Budget Analytics, Planning, Debt and Reporting, and these tasks will now fall to the CFO. And there was also a financial specialist, third level, $26,481, only budgeting for half-time in hopes that we'll be able to budget full-time next fiscal year. And then finally, Beach Sticker Clerks, there was a cutback of $10,000. Reducing funds means less staff for Beach Sticker sales in the upcoming year, long away times, online processing. Hopefully, that user will opt to go online for their stickers. And so far, that seems to be working well. But those are cutbacks that were made in this particular department that I wanted the committee to be aware of. So thank you.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Yes.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Department 151, Law. On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Law as follows. Personal Services, $351,573. Ordinary Maintenance, $119,000 for a departmental total, Law of $470,573, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is Department 152, Personal, Human Personnel slash Human Resources. Budget and Finance Committee, on a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Personnel slash Human Resources as follows. Personal Services, $329,648. Ordinary Maintenance, $62,800 for a departmental total. Personnel, Human Resources, $392,448, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Councilor Gross, the public is having a hard time hearing us, so if we can really speak closely to the microphone, I would appreciate it. I just got a text from somebody.
I think, I think they would appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Next department?
Next department.
Our next department is Department 155, Management Information Systems. On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Management Information Systems as follows. Personal Services, $431,020. Ordinary Maintenance, $772,652. And capital outlay, $32,500 for a departmental total, Management Information Systems of $1,236,172, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Councilor Gilman.
So the cuts in MIS amounted to close to $100,000. They include office equipment, $4,000. Management will not allow new printers in fiscal '25. Software maintenance, $13,500. All these are scanning projects aside from existing building plans. We'll need to pause. Let me try to speak louder. Software, $10,500. Freeze on all new software and applications. Computer equipment, $50,000. No Gloucester Police Department workstation replacements. General workstation replacement will only be 10%. So I just wanted to mention that those cuts were made in MIS. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, I mean, Council Worthley.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this budget, and I think the department does a lot for the entire city. Couple weeks ago, we had a joint meeting with the School Department, and Mayor Vergis said that he wanted to preempt some potential conversation about consolidation, which I appreciate on one hand, but also, I raised this before, I'm going to continue to raise it.
Does this have anything to do with this current budget?
Am I, Managed Information Services?
With this current budget?
It does. I'll make sure it does.
Are we consolidating this year so it makes a difference in this budget, is my question?
Well, my comment on the dollar mark, which I think is valid, is simply to say this does not reflect consolidation. I would like for us to, I'd like to challenge the mayor and the MIS department and the School MIS department to see if there's ways, or not, prove that it can't be the case. But recently, either the mayor or Jill Kales referred to former IT Director Ryan Knowles as our rock star that we lost. The mayor said, any changes we make now won't affect this fiscal year. But I'm also in receipt of an email where Ryan Knowles proposed a consolidation in December of 2021 that would save $150,000 a year, bring major efficiencies, and also reduce our costs for the things we buy because it's still under the School Department.
Again, 2021 is not FY '25 budget.
Nobody.
Please, please, keep on, keep on talking.
Right, but when someone says this year, we can't worry about that because that's not going to affect next year, that's fine, but we have to look at the history here that at some point, we need to start working on these things.
We need to concentrate on what's before us, please. Thank you.
I support the budget. Thank you.
Any more deliberation? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next department is 161, the City Clerk's Office. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for the City Clerk as follows. Personal Services, $355,169. Ordinary Maintenance, $6,905 for a departmental total of $362,074, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Comment. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Grow?
Aye.
Memhard?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Our next department, Department 163, Registration. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for registration as follows. Personal Services, $76,076. Ordinary Maintenance, $80,200. Departmental total, $156,276 for registration, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Department 171, Conservation Commission. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Conservation Commission as follows. Personal Services: $125,350. Ordinary Maintenance: $20,500 for a departmental total. For Conservation Commission: $145,858. $850, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Call the roll. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Department 181, Community Development. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for community development as follows. Personal Services: $652,673. Ordinary Maintenance: $93,100 for a departmental total. Community Development: $745,773, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Councilor Gilman.
Thank you, Council President. So just to remind councilors that community development cut back $57,690 budgeting only for half of the salary for an economic development director in order to allow the new community development director to start. They'll have to decide if the position should be reclassified or if they would like to hire at the same grade and hope that funds can cover in the next fiscal year. In addition, there was a cutback of $25,000 for purchase of services, reduced funding available for planning projects from $50,000 to $25,000. And my personal opinion in this particular department is that we were understaffed all around already based on similar districts like Salem and Beverly, and I think that this is an important department that we fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Groh.
I want to thank Councilor Gilman for reminding us of the cuts that have been made on the city side, because I think it's really important for people to understand that this budget has got pain throughout it. But certainly with the Community Development Department, we've got the—we've got Planning Initiative, we've got 3A zoning, we've got all these things going on at one time. It's been a tremendous impact and on the—on the Community Development Department. We've had staff openings that haven't been filled. I think we really need to understand that these aren't necessarily the departments we think about, and we don't think about them like we think about police or fire or the schools, but without them, we don't function properly as a city, and I'm glad you're going to keep reminding us of the cuts that have been made.
More discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
And speaking of police, that's where we're headed next. And it falls under several different departments. The first one is Department 210, Police Administration. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Police Administration as follows. Personal Services: $728,243. Ordinary Maintenance: $82,838 for a departmental total of $811,81. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
The next department is Department 211, Police Uniform. And that means not just their uniforms, but the police are wearing uniforms.
Do we know who's designing them this year?
We're having a contact. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for police uniform as follows. Personal Services: $6,768,649. Ordinary Maintenance: $223,159. Capital Outlay: $163,364 for a departmental total. Police Uniforms of $7,155,172, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Councilor Gilman.
So, everyone talks a lot about how important enforcement is in our city, and I just want to note that police uniform budget for the beach has cut back $50,000 in overtime. Police uniform for the court overtime is $44,000. Police uniform for police department training overtime has cut back $44,000. And the other matter is police uniform for vehicles is opting not to replace a vehicle which is in desperate need of replacement for the amount of $25,748. And as a former ward counselor for eight years, I would say that enforcement is a huge issue, and we can't afford to cut back with the whole department any more than they already have. Thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
I just have a question to ask. The mayor submitted his budget to us. Budget and Finance reviewed it line by line by line. Right before the school department presented their budget, the mayor also presented the cuts that were made before it got to him, but went cuts from departments to the mayor, to the council, to Budget and Finance, back to the council. I just wonder the value of taking the time to do the mayor's narrative at this point on what cuts came to him before came to us.
I can answer that, because it's never been made in public. The schools have been made in public.
Well, okay. Doesn't make sense process-wise why we'd be discussing this at the beginning of the process.
Legit discussion on every individual. Council Benson.
Yeah, I respectfully disagree. I think there is value to have this because this is the first time it is in the public. Like, for example, Councilor Gilman, you spoke about some of the cuts. You're also talking about the training overtime. There's a lot of need for police training, so there can't be further cuts on this, and I agree with Councilor Gilman, and I appreciate you actually coming forward and telling us these specific cuts that are being made so folks out there understand. Thank you for that.
I think I was misunderstood. What I'm saying is, we spent 50, 70 hours working on line item review, and then we have a narrative from one councilor, which I appreciate, but it depends on the time process, but tonight, we can do that every time.
If you would like multiple councilors to make that point, then that's a welcome, but these were never discussed in public.
I respectfully disagree, because I think this was information that was shared with us later in the process, and I think it puts in perspective the cuts that unfortunately were addressed within the school department, and this reflects the hard work that went on behind the scenes in each and every other department and where the mayor's office negotiated severe cutbacks that the general public needs to be cognizant and appreciative of.
Council Groh.
I would say that it's about as relevant as arguing—more relevant, frankly, than arguing against the votes that you made through each of the BNF motions for this budget to begin with. I mean, I think that—
Let's stick with the—just the relevance of this.
I think that it's relevant because it's actually bringing information to the table.
Let's not do a, you know, he said, he said. The motions that have been made. So, thank you. Has the roll been called? Nope. Any more discussion? Madam—Council Benson.
I'll just say, with—I'm going to be supporting this motion, but I will say to our police department, thank you every day for what you do for this city and keeping this city safe, and you will continue to be able to deliver on the services because we have great men and women serving in uniform, and thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Department 212, Police Criminal Investigations. Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for police criminal investigations as follows. Personal Services: $581,543. Ordinary Maintenance: $2,450. Departmental Total: $583,993, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Worthley, seconded by Councilor—I mean, motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Doing a little dyslexic hearing. Any discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
I just—I'm going to be making a text right now to my surgeon, so I just want everyone to know that I'm not violating any open meeting law. Understandable.
Hopefully, it's good news.
It was. I can walk.
Thank you.
You have a surgeon to extra taxes.
Department 216, Police Harbors. And Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for police harbors as follows. Personal Services: $33,841. Ordinary Maintenance: $22,468 for a departmental total for police harbors of $56,309, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Councilor Benson.
Thank you. I'll just make a note that there is a cut here for boat maintenance and totaling $4,582, and it will lead to deferred maintenance of the police boat.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Actually, I'm sorry, I do one more comment.
Okay, please.
So, I appreciate what you're saying, that we're deferring maintenance. We're also projecting a 250% increase in the fuel for the police boat this year. Doesn't make sense. Why fuel for the police department's gone up a 250%, but hasn't for anybody else, but that's in here. It's a small amount of money, $12,000, but maybe when we get to the end of the year and that money's not spent, it gets spent somewhere else like it usually does, so.
Councilor Worthley should keep in mind that we also have a second harbor shuttle boat, so we've doubled the force that's going out circulating between all the waters, waterways.
That's in the harbor master's. Not the police department.
Thank you. You're right. Sorry.
But I think that the initial thing is that there was need for a greater response, so there was need for more patrols. That's the purpose of this.
My comment is just that the fuel line—for the police fuel line—the line item for the fuel police budget has gone up from $5,000 expense in fiscal year '23, $4,900 in fiscal year '24, doesn't include that June, and it's been pushed for $12,000 for this year. Maybe that's a place that they can get maintenance money for the boat. Wait, we can move forward.
Council Groh.
If I'm to understand what you said, it's possible that the police harbors, that they'll be running more patrols, that they'll be out in the water more often, more frequently.
We would hope. It would also be reflected in the piece overtime because there is no dedicated patrolman to the boat.
So if they go out more often, they're going to burn more fuel.
Correct.
Okay. Is that—
Thank you. Yes, I mean, that would be my—that is my understanding, but I've been wrong before.
Councilor Nolan has his hand raised.
Councilor Nolan.
We also have an issue with the Merrimack Valley. We've been asked to help out with the closing of a coast guard station up there and protection, and that may have something to do with that as well. They have staffing issues with the coast guard at Merrimack. It's a very busy channel, and I know that we had said that we would work with them as well as our coast guard station and the harbor master's office, so that possibly could have something to do with it. But we do have more enforcement issues coming up at Winger Sheek and different things going on, so fuel increase, I can certainly understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Benson.
And I may add, also, from my understanding—and I'm new here, this is my first time—and there also is, like, cost of oil, cost of prices going up, so that's also probably a little bit reflected here, if I'm right or wrong, but the price of—at the pump is kind of expensive right now, so.
Do you have that number in front of you? Do you have the FY '23 actual number there? What was it? Yeah, what page?
It's 36.
Okay.
Line number 548001, fuel for police boat. 2023, $5,034. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be speaking without—
That's okay. Oh, I appreciate—because I was trying to find it, and you found it first, so.
Fiscal year '23, $5,034. Fiscal year '24, $4980. Again, it doesn't include May and June, and then the mayor's proposed budget is $12,000 for that for next year. I don't think we need to spend any more time on that. Want to the deferred maintenance comment on—there's other money in that that could be used.
That could be used to that—to fill that cut in that—within that department, as well as the entire budget works that way. Same revenues that are fulfilled need to be filled by revenues that did fulfill, so. Call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next department, 218, Police Parking. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for police parking as follows. Personal Services: $128,185. Departmental Total: $128,185, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Councilor Gilman.
Thank you. I wanted to remind councilors that there was a part-time parking control officer. The police department decided not to fill a part-time parking control officer, and with this comes reduced revenue as well, since these officers are issuing tickets. And if I think of almost every day on some of our social media, everyone's always saying we need to do more ticketing, and that this comes as a setback for the police department because I think—I think that our constituents are looking for more service, and unfortunately, we've had to cut back this position for fiscal '25.
Thank you.
Council Gross.
Council Memhard.
Just following up on that, which is absolutely true and unfortunate, but the police chief did make the point during budget negotiations and discussion that the new technology that's being used to monitor license plates and move traffic along and to issue tickets—the license plate readers that now the traffic—the traffic control people use are very efficient, and so he feels that they are, in fact, doing more work with the same crew as a result of improved technology.
Thank you, Councilor.
I would also like to point out that this council and previous council has made many parking changes that need—that they're worthless unless they're enforced, so—and they're not all downtown. They're all over the city, and this is a pretty far-reaching city. Just wanted to make sure everybody remembers that. Any other discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is Department 220, fire prevention and suppression. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for fire prevention and suppression as follows. Personal services, $10,624,166. Ordinary maintenance, $921,250. Capital outlay, $170,163. Departmental total, fire prevention and suppression, $11,715,579. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Department 241, inspectional services. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for inspectional services as follows. Personal services, $596,499. Ordinary maintenance, $13,700 for a departmental total of $610,199. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is Department 291, fire emergency management. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for fire emergency management as follows. Personal services, $75,677. Ordinary maintenance, $51,900. Capital outlay, $2,500 for a departmental total for fire emergency management of $130,077. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Is there any discussion? Council Benson.
Just for public, I want to just note that I have relatives on the fire department. I just want the public to know that, and I don't think that clouds my votes, but I just want folks to know that. Thank you.
All right, no more discussion. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next, we have Department 292, police animal control. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for police animal control as follows. Personal services, $146,502. Ordinary maintenance, $6,000 for a departmental total of $152,502. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next, we have Department 296, shellfish control. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for shellfish control as follows. Personal services, $181,611. Ordinary maintenance, $25,100 for a departmental total of shellfish control, $206,711. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
So, we're moving on now to, from fire and police to the DPW, Department of Public Works. And we're going to be voting on Department 403, DPW solid waste disposal and recycling. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for DPW solid waste disposal and recycling as follows. Personal services, $20,000. Ordinary maintenance, $2,862,295 for a departmental total of $2,882,295. An iso move.
Second. Before the motion was made, Councilor Nolan had his hand up.
I just want to state that my brother does work for the DPW, but this will not cloud any judgment on any votes that I have tonight.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley.
President. My brother also works for the DPW, it would not cloud my judgment.
You have no financial interest in.
I do not.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more discussion, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Moving on through the DPW departments, the next department is Department 411, DPW engineering. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for DPW engineering as follows. Personal services, $63,381. Ordinary maintenance, $8,057 for a departmental total, $71,438. An iso move.
Motion made by Councilman Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley.
I can't find my note, but I would like to just point out for general information that the, the purple bags that we buy, the purchase, the total of that purchase that comes in on revenue is about a million dollars short of what it costs us to, to do, to dispose of our solid waste and recycling. And we're in a really, really good contract right now, which expires, I believe, in a couple of years. And right now, our recycling's picked up for free. Other towns are paying a hundred dollars a ton, and we have a really good per-ton rate on our waste disposal, but I just wanted to let people know that the pay as you throw only pays about half, so, thank you.
Mr. President, can I add to that?
Yes, please.
Real quickly. I want to give credit to DPW Director Mike Hale. When he negotiated that contract, it was a 10-year contract, and a lot of people thought it was a little aggressive to be locked in for a 10-year contract. A lot of city and towns wish they had been locked in at the lower rate that we have, and I think you said two years. I think he said it's next year, one more year in the contract, so that's something we need to keep an eye on and be supportive of.
It's going to be a tough one.
But that's, kudos to the department for making that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on trash and recycling?
We approve it. We've already voted that.
We were talking about engineering.
We were humoring you.
Oh, it's late.
411. I was going to call a point of order, but I thought.
You should have.
Yeah, I should have.
Sorry, folks.
Engineering.
Any discussion on engineering? Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is Department 421, DPW Public Works Administration. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for DPW Public Works Administration as follows. Personal services, $129,969. Ordinary maintenance, $16,790 for a departmental total of $146,759. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley.
I'm going to throw something out.
Discussion.
Yes. I'm just going to do a blanket thing for DPW. This is another department that is highly visible in the public, highly understaffed, highly underfunded, with the expectations of what we have for this department. I think, I don't remember what the, what the staffing is, is it 16 or something like that? You know, whatever we, whatever we put into this department, they can use to work on projects all over the city that have been deferred, delayed, not been able to be done as, as, in timely a way as, as they might otherwise have been, so, you know, when, when roads aren't getting repaired and, and the Moby mats aren't put out on the beach and things like that, that's, that's why. It's not, not for lack of wanting to get the job done, it's for lack of funding.
More discussion?
I'd just like to know, they may not have been listed, but there's a whole host of things that, services that will not be provided. So, I just wanted to, to point that out, you know, you spoke about potholes, $25,000 was cut on, to buy pothole fill, so, just a lot of things like that.
President.
Yep, Dylan.
Including, like, yeah, going off of that.
But it's not yet.
Oh, not yet, yeah.
No.
He's ready. It's still thunder.
I was ready.
All right.
All right. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next department, Department 423 is always our wild card in the budget, and that's the DPW snow and ice removal budget. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for DPW snow and ice removal as follows. Personal services, $142,500. Ordinary maintenance, $589,100. Capital outlay, $35,000 for a total for the department for snow and ice removal, $766,600. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Council Worthley.
Thank you. This is the only line item, I believe, that the state allows us to underfund, and even in a year like this past one, which was not the most robust year in terms of snow, I think we spent $1.2 million in that account, so this is one of those places where we always end up backfilling regardless of our experience with the snow. If we were to go up to what we really think the number would be, we have to maintain that number going forward, so if there were a year we didn't need as much, we still need to budget for. So, it's a little complicated in that the flexibility makes it actually harder to, to put that, the right number in there, but that's underfunding basically what we know is going to cost us next year.
Right, and you were actually right, right on with the, the reasoning is because if we, you know, particularly with climate change coming, if we have, you know, if we do budget what we spend, and then we can never go down below that. It's, it's a weird thing. We can't go below the $766,600 either, so it's just, and that's where some of the, we have to be cognizant of our other revenue sources, and sometimes they look a little heavy, but this one seems to gobble up an awful lot of those, those resources, so we got to remember that there's well over, if, if not a million, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars that, that this year is going to have to go there from other sources when, all those things that we're going to be passing very soon on the transfers.
I concur with the Council President, and with climate change down the pike, sometimes you have, you see extremes where one winter you'll have nothing, and then you'll have a 2015 or similar to that, so it's very, it's important to note that.
Thank you. More discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next department, Department 470, Department of Public Works, Public Services. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve fiscal year 2025 appropriations for DPW Public Services as follows. Personnel services, $18,63,937. Ordinary maintenance, $1,095,800. Capital outlay, $50,000. Departmental total, DPW Public Services for a total of $3,8,945. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Council Gilman.
Thank you, Council President. So, this particular matter is one that's really near and dear, and there are seven matters that are being cut back. The one that bothers me the most, and I feel it, and I know we all feel it, in the, the areas of our community outside of downtown, is the maintenance of trees, and right now the reduction is 30,000 off what was originally budgeted, however, our DPW Public Works Director was very clear that there should be an extra zero to that in the BNF meeting when we were discussing this. So, that means that he really feels that 300,000 is adequate, and he's cutting, and this is just, the fact that he, this is down to 30,000, a reduction is just really disappointing. When we can't maintain our trees, our trees fall into wires during storms, and that's a huge issue for public safety. And I will recall, one of the biggest concerns I always had as a ward counselor is when there was a power outage, and I knew a handful of people that were on respirators or oxygen mask, and, and it was, it's just a scary thing. So, you know, whenever we can find more money, we, we have to rebuild this because this is a huge issue.[1554.41] National Grid takes care of a lot of the, the poles that they oversee, but we have a lot of trees that we need to maintain. The other things in this that we've cut back on are bleacher repairs, deferred maintenance of two thousand dollars, and that includes Memorial Park benches, ten thousand dollars were cut back in irrigation maintenance, fifteen thousand for playground equipment and repairs, turf maintenance, deferred maintenance of New Balance Stadium of ten thousand dollars, lifeguard supplies for five thousand dollars, and a mix for potholes, which is a reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars, less ability to fill potholes. And I think we all suffer from that, whether you're in a public or private road, potholes were a problem in our city. So I just wanted to mention those things, that these issues are, are really important to us, and it's unfortunate that we can't have a more robust budget for some of these issues. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
The next department is Department four-seven-two, DPW Facilities Maintenance. And Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for DPW Facilities Maintenance as follows. Personal services, three million, three hundred and eight thousand, fifty-six dollars, ordinary maintenance, three million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, for a departmental total of six million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
The next department for us tonight is Department four-nine-nine, DPW Central Services. And the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for DPW Central Services as follows. Personal services, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and three dollars, ordinary maintenance, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, capital outlay, ten thousand dollars, for a departmental total, DPW Central Services, one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counsel, I mean, made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess. I know it's going to be a long day, I just need a second.
You're so young, you need recess already.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll second it for Counselor Majota.
Okay.
On favor?
No, we need.
No, roll call.
Does the Council President call a recess?
Yeah.
I know you can't.
Can I? No? Says no?
Not except for an emergency. I've looked at it.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
Motion for recess passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Eight oh-two, we'll be back at eight oh-seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I thought, debatable motion. Line, folks. First line, go on, one. What's that?
But always not doing these just occasionally, but I don't have a way to do it.
Okay.
Participant. If I joined you. I just. I don't know if you want to give me his number, and I just text him when it happens, and I don't know.
Just reminded that our mic was set up.
Raise hand. Here, see? I just have raise hand captions, then it more, it's only to disconnect audio. There's no. Okay, and anyway, maybe you don't either, then.
No, absolutely.
Oh. We ended where, on Counsel in Aging? Is that what we ended?
Further stuff.
Okay.
Board of Health, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Board of Health.
My little spookled down too soon.
Oh, it's good. Wait, you had a seven, eight, nine, ten.
That's my printer.
Yes.
No, I broke my foot once, that was worse. Kind of like a holiday.
No. There's a lot of ones.
Oh. Another. About that, yeah.
I'm right halfway through.
I'm not an engineer. All I know is. Road map. Everybody took, everybody decided to take a long time to go to the bathroom.
Oh. Counselor Worthley, Counselor Gilman, time's up.
You too, Mr. Benson.
Counselor Benson. We're in overtime here now. Counselor Gilman.
It says we should have ten-minute recesses. Then they're going to be twenty minutes. Good point, good point.
Those things are good. They're really good, no, I can't.
Thanks, Sean.
Hey, we're back in session.
We are back in session at our budget meeting tonight. The next department for our consideration is Department five-ten, the Board of Health. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for the Board of Health as follows. Personal services, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, fifty-three dollars, ordinary maintenance, ninety-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars for a departmental total. Board of Health, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counsel, Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Counsel Benson.
Thank you, Council President. I'm just going to note some cuts that have been made, including, we're looking first at salaries, seventy-nine thousand, removed Assistant Director of Health slash Social Services that was slated to move to the operating budget, hoping department can seek grants to keep funding for positions available. And then the other is purchase of services, thirty thousand wastewater infectious disease testing. And I will just say that the Health Department is dealing with a wide range of issues that have come up, including, we're dealing with rat issues and so many things that continue to come up. And I really think that they were, they really are developing a well, well-professional operation there, and they are working with a very lean department, and we can even say lean and mean, and I mean that in a good way. But I do think that some of this, this is gonna, this is gonna cost them, and I will not, I'm, will not be supporting any fur, we cannot do any further cuts to our Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Benson. Okay, seeing no more discussion, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Next department, four-five-one, Counsel on Aging.
Counselor.
Please, you'd like to make a disclosure.
I would like to declare a disclosure through MGL two-sixty-eight A that I am a ex-officio member of the Counsel on Aging Commission or Board, and I have no financial benefits from being on this role, and I don't even vote on this, at this commission.
Out the suspenders.
Okay. Motion, Counsel.
On the Counsel on Aging, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Counsel on Aging as follows. Personal services, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars, ordinary maintenance, forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars, for a departmental total of two hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and nine dollars, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to note that the Counsel on Aging has opted to hold off on the rooftop generator. We're hoping to cover this cost from the ARPA fund if, only if there's sufficient balance left on the award. Otherwise, this cost will have to wait for the next fiscal year. And it's unfortunate because now that the roof has been fixed at Rose Baker, we were really ready to get the generator set up. And without that, it just means that when there are people in the community that are without power and have no place to go, that it's one more opportunity that they don't have to, to get warm in the Olympic time. So that's, that's a problem. And I appreciate the fact that they worked hard to, to, to have to give that up, but it was not done with, it was a very difficult decision.
Thank you. I think it all should be noted that with the generator not being available, that now the city is also moving into, there's three rooms that can be used for hybrid meetings in the library, in the senior center, which I think is going to be utilized since they've just come online in the, a couple of months ago. So I think we'll see a lot more use there, and that will be also very helpful if there's a, just a local, local power outage downtown, that that would be helpful, but not to be done this year, I guess. Any more discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
The next department before us tonight is the Veterans Benefits, Department four-five-four-three. And Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Veterans Services, Veterans Benefits as follows. Personal services, one hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, ordinary maintenance, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, for a departmental total of five hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. I'd just like to say that this department is one of the gems in our, in our city. They do a really great, really, really great job for our veterans, which is such a, as we've seen around the country, such an ignored population, and these, these people do a lot with a very little. Anything else? Counsel Benson.
Thank you, Council President, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Coming from a family of veterans, a father, grandfather, many uncles, and grandfathers, great uncles, they are a real gem of this city, and they give so much to our veterans and people who serve this country. They deserve all the respect in the world, and this, this Veterans Benefits, they show that respect, and they deliver for our veterans, and I want to thank them.
Seeing no other discussion, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Next department, five-six-three, Tourism Commission. On a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Tourism Commission as follows. Personal services, twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, ordinary maintenance, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a departmental total, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
The next department before us tonight is Department six-ten, our Library Administration. And before I get into the motion, I'd like to make a two-hundred, two-sixty-eight A disclosure that I am a past member of the board, past board president and corporator, as well as being a card-carrying member of the local library, as you should all be too.
You're out.
We still need cards.
But it doesn't affect my vote.
No.
Anybody else wish to declare any library affiliation?
I don't have a library card. Why not? Reading. Okay.
They also have really good internet borrowing services, too, so, yeah.
Mobile Net? And what's the other?
Hulu or Hoopla or?
Libby.
Yeah, that too. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2025 appropriations for Library Administration as follows. Personal services, one million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars, ordinary maintenance, two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, for a departmental total of Library Administration, one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, ninety-six dollars, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Race.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Bro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
I'm going to ask for Auditor Kenny Coster to take over for the reading of the final set of motions, please.
Okay, Department seven-hundred, Debt Service. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for debt service as follows. Ordinary maintenance, twelve million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. The total is the same, twelve million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard. Oh, it's, okay, seconded by.
Counselor Coster.
Yeah, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Yeah, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department eight twenty, Other State and County Assessments. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for Other State and County Assessments as follows. Ordinary Maintenance, two million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. The total is the same, two million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department nine oh one, Health and Life Insurance. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for Health and Life Insurance as follows. Personal Services, ten million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. The total is the same, ten million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Counselor Grow.
Yeah, this is one of those ones that comes up every year, and every year we have a discussion about how health insurance is treated in the city side of the budget and the school side of the budget. And I guess I would just ask the administration to look at the possibility of removing it from the school department budget. I mean, it still has to be accounted for in that budget, but it takes away the, the apples and oranges issues that we have when we talk about a department increase of three percent over here and seven percent over here. That seven percent includes all of the healthcare costs.
We stay on this budget.
This is on this budget, thank you.
Well, I, sorry.
And what I would say is, is that we, we would need to do that moving forward.
For future date, not tonight. And you can, you know, future date. Thank you.
Good bird.
Oh, good. It's, it's somebody's spirit.
Hope he does.
Watch him, tap him, buddy.
The bird was agreeing with Counselor.
It's a sign, Tony. We'll see, we'll see what happens. We'll see where the droppings fly.
I feel sad for him.
All right. Call the, call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department nine oh three, Medicare Insurance. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for Medicare Insurance as follows. Personal Services, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The total is the same, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion on this really lively topic. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gillman.
Aye.
Counselor Brace.
Aye.
Counselor Gross.
Aye.
Counselor Grow.
Aye.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Counselor Nolan. Counselor Nolan.
Aye.
Counselor Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department nine ten, Workers' Compensation. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for workers' compensations as follows. Personal Services, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The total is the same, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department nine fifteen, Unemployment Compensation. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for unemployment compensation as follows. Personal Services, fifty thousand dollars, total fifty thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department nine two one, Pensions Regular Contributory. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for pensions regular contributory as follows. Personal Services, twelve million, six hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Total is the same, twelve million, six hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Seeing none. Oh, no. Oh, no. Okay. Hopefully, this is not insol, not insolvent. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department nine four two, Regional School Assessments. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for regional school assessments for the North Shore Regional Vocational School as follows. Ordinary Maintenance, one million, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Total is the same, one million, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion.
Council President.
Yes.
I need to disclose that under MGL two sixty-eight A, I am the School Committee Representative, representing Gloucester for this. However, I have no financial gains personally on this particular vote. Thank you.
Yep. For the discussion, seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department nine forty-five, Liability Insurance. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations for liability insurance as follows. Ordinary Maintenance, one million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The total is the same, one million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Department nine seven zero, Other Financing Uses. There are two items as a part of this department, seventy-five thousand dollars to the Athletic Revolving Fund, and thirty thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty-six certification of real and personal property. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve fiscal year twenty-five Other Financing Uses as follows. Transferred to Other Funds, one hundred and five thousand dollars. The total is the same, one hundred and five thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gillman.
Aye.
Brace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
The next department, School Department. It's a bottom line budget of fifty-one million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, one opposed, Worthley, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-five School Department budget in the amount of fifty-one million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Counselor Gillman.
So, this has been extraordinarily painful for me personally. The, this particular matter has just been exacerbated by the rising costs of special education. We have sixty students that are attending out of district, and those costs have gone up twelve to fourteen percent, which is really unfortunate, and it's just not right. And so I believe very strongly that we, as a council, need to really join the school committee and our legislators to do whatever we can to lobby. These things have to be fixed. It's not right that these costs are going up, and the Senate has an opportunity to create some caps in terms of the amount of monies that are given to those organizations that are supporting our children, and it just, it's creating a problem for us as the home district, and I think that that's a huge issue. And also, the ESRA funds, you know, have been a real conflict, because although they were given in good faith, those are easing out at this point, and it's created another double issue. So I am very, very heartfelt about this, and I, and I do believe that we have to watch this closely, and we have to do whatever we can during the school year to roll up our sleeves and think, think of ways that we can help the schools, because our schools have come a long way. I'm really proud of them, and we need to keep that moving forward. And these issues are really very much out of the hands of the local school committee, and they're more in the hands of the people that are making the decisions at the state level. So I'm willing to help out however we can, and I hope you will join me in this upcoming year.
Counselor Grow.
I won't repeat everything Counselor Gillman said, which was eloquent. You know, I've been an advocate for our schools since I moved here. My wife and I have taken particular interest in making sure that we do everything we can to provide for our schools. This is a, an unfortunate budget this year, certainly one, obviously driven by special ed, special education costs. We do need to grapple with that. That is absolutely something that we need to begin to hold our, our state legislature, state delegation responsible for. But I think it's really important to remember that this budget started out six million dollars off of what the School Department initially requested, and through one-time monies and ARPA funding, we've, there's been a filling of four million of that. There's two million dollars lacking. It's two million too much, but as we've been pointing out tonight with the, with the other city side budgets, which is also two million dollars short, I don't see how we, I don't see how we bridge that gap. And I think the, you know, the, there's a, there's a desire sometimes to want to cook the revenues and make sure that, you know, say that we'll just add ten percent here add ten percent here and twenty percent here, and it'll all work out. That could really come back to bite us. I mean, it might work, but it more like, more than likely will end up with us in a situation where we have negative free cash next year, and we have a lot of borrowing to do that's going to affect our, our bond rating, the interest payments that we're paying. You know, I, I will certainly support any efforts through the course of the year to route money that, that comes available to the schools and, and fill those gaps as much as possible. But I just don't think that we're, we're going to get there with, with, with revenue cooking this year. You know, we, maybe we could have done, you know, a small amount, but at the end of the day, we have to be responsible to the entire city budget, and I'm, I'm comforted by the fact that the school committee has registered state accounts, not accounts, but contingency accounts for contract negotiations and settlements. So I'm hopeful that those will be resolved as soon as possible. And certainly, I would support those being settled to the benefit of our, of our employees. But I'm going to support this budget the way it is, and I think it's really important to keep the administration accountable, that if we end up next year with a whole lot of free cash, there's going to have a whole lot of questions to be answered as to why, and why that money wasn't utilized properly through the budgeting process. So as much as we might like free cash, there better not be a whole lot of it next year.
Councilor Grace.
Thank you. This is a very painful subject, and everybody has worked so very, very hard to try to figure out a way to, to solve this dilemma. I just want to say thank you to Councilor Worthy for his efforts. You know, regardless of the outcome, his heart was in the right place. He did put a lot of time and effort into trying to, trying to find things and to think out of the box, and it is appreciated. You know, and I'm, I, looking at all of the cuts that have been made, and I don't see how we can make the columns any different than what they are, and I am truly sorry for that. You know, this is the first time I've gone through the budget process, so it's, it's a learning curve, definitely. And every day, I'm learning more, and, you know, onward and upward, and hopefully better, better for next year. Thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
Thank you. I voted against the school department budget. No, I'm sorry. I voted against the mayor's recommendation for the school department budget at Budget and Finance. I'll be doing the same thing today. And I really do appreciate the calls for working together and, you know, routing money that comes through the year to the school department. Cooking the books might have been, cooking the revenues was mentioned. I think the rhetoric around that is unhelpful. We talk about routing money. We just, an hour ago, we voted to reduce the tax rate and the sewer rate by taking three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, I think the number was, of free cash.
Hundred and seventy-five.
Seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
No, the first vote, we took them out of order. We had six hundred and eleven thousand dollars to reduce the tax levy. It's the first vote we took. One hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to reduce the sewer rate, and then another six hundred and eleven thousand dollars to reduce the tax rate. And the same people who say we should be considering an override to bring in more tax revenue just voted to reduce taxes that could then have been used to help bridge the gap. And I know that seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand isn't the two-point-one or two-point-two million dollars that's missing in the school department budget, but it's something. It's the male librarian. It's the, a couple of tier-two professionals. It's paraprofessionals. It's raises that are long overdue. We don't negotiate in public.
Raises are in the budget.
Raises are budgeted. They said that last year, too, for the paraprofessionals.
And he is there.
Okay. But nonetheless, we just voted, math I have is seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars that we just voted to reduce the tax levy for next year and to reduce the sewer rate. That's money we have, and we say we'd like to route it throughout the course of the year to the, to the school. We just brought it away from the school department. So I think it's, I don't want to inflame this. I just don't think it's fair to say we stand with you and then take a vote like that, right? And then we talk about the cooking, the revenues. I've yet to heard a reason, and I understand that maybe some other places where there's revenues that are too high, but there's no evidence that our food, our meals taxes are going to be forty percent less than last year. There's no evidence that our hotel, motel taxes are going to be thirty percent less than last year. That's a million dollars.
Neither of those are right. It's thirty percent and it's twenty percent.
Thirty and twenty?
Yep. Did the math today.
I'm sorry, I mixed that up, but still, it's about nine hundred thousand dollars difference.
No, no, no.
That's right. There's a.
Okay. All right. Well, that, we'll be in the revenue soon.
Right. But what I'm saying is.
Because there's many other line items that.
I just referred to the, cook the revenues. I'm just saying, we want the same number from last year. Right there, there's eight hundred thousand dollars.
And there's other ones that are also in the opposite direction by a lot.
And we voted for those without any analysis of that. Like, we thought it was too much. We should have said so then. But nonetheless, I can't support it. And the last thing, and I respectfully disagree with the mayor, but I do this with respect, when he says if there's any changes or we can backfill the school department budget, I just don't know how. When I came on the council two years ago, we were awarded, we were informed, we got five-point-five million in free cash. I think that was in January. The next year, it was four-point-eight million. We learned that in February. The next year was four-point-one million, and we learned that in March. How do you backfill a school position that's been vacant for eight months? You can't undo what you missed. So I appreciate that if there's more money, they'll backfill. I think that there were ways, without having to raise taxes, without having to raise any fees, we could have got a lot closer, and we didn't. I appreciate Councilor Grace noting my effort to do this. It's not completely in vain, but I, I just think that talk about doing it later doesn't solve the problem now. And I just want to challenge the mayor and the council to work harder, faster. And we'll leave it at that.
Councilor Gro.
A couple of quick points that I'd like to, to go back on. One is, councillor is suggesting adding even more one-time money to the budget to satisfy the, the school budget deficit. Adding that one-time money means that we are going to be starting at a five-hundred-million, our five million dollar or six million dollar hole at the beginning of next year in terms of budgeting. By using one-time money, we are essentially saying, okay, we're going to fill the gap this year. And I suggested this to the mayor. I said, you know, this is coming late in the game. Maybe we should do this. But in truth, it's, it's financially irresponsible to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to backfill all of this with, with one-time revenues, and then come up in FY26 and say, oh, by the way, we're starting five million dollars short of where we were, and we don't have that money. So I think that you can, you can talk about using, you know, six hundred thousand dollars that we just voted for in terms of free cash. We already have four million dollars in one-time funds in this budget, and going that far, farther than that, I think is fiscally irresponsible. And secondly, when it comes to revenues, I just, I mean, I, I wasn't at the meeting the whole time, but I do notice that you voted for every single revenue number, three to zero. So I think as a member of BNF, the time to have really, really plowed into this as a, as an issue for raising revenues was during the subcommittee times, not, not right now, where we're looking at passing the budget with essentially the recommendations from both our, our auditor and our CFO, to stick with our revenue numbers. I mean, I think basically, it's, it's, it's an opportunity to, to pander a little bit, but I don't think it's moving us forward. And I think at the end of the day, it's irresponsible, and I think that, you know.
Enough editorializing.
Point of order. This is all ad hominem, irresponsible.
No, it's not ad hominem.
Yeah. But I just want to note for the record that this is personal, and it shouldn't be. The numbers are the numbers.
It's not personal. The numbers are the numbers. The numbers are the numbers.
I'm going to call a point of order, and I'm going to force it.
Thank you. I just want to respond to the point.
No, we're not, we're not going tit-for-tat here.
No, but on voting yes in a committee and changing a vote at the full council level, there's nothing that stops us from being able to change that.
Absolutely. Nothing that stops you.
And I also want to add that.
And we said that at the very beginning of the meeting.
I appreciated that.
So I would like to make.
But any suggestion?
I would like to say something about the first six hundred and eleven thousand that was returned to the taxpayers.
Right.
Returned to the taxpayers who paid it. So you don't consider that as something that is a bonus that we can then steal back. That's returned to the taxpayers who are heavily burdened in this city.
There is no stealing back. It's money we have, and we can pick. It's compared to what, right?
It's, we save a couple of dollars. There was a surplus. They've returned six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Six hundred, you know, whatever, a thousand dollars.
The male librarian.
To the taxpayers. They returned that to the taxpayers. So. And I think that there's a return to taxpayers in investing in the things that are being cut. So just, we can have a difference of opinion on it, and it's okay. Any more discussion on this? Oh, hands all over the place. Councilor Majota.
Um, yes, I just want to say this has been extremely hard. You know, going line-line by the budget, spending hours and nights that might not be, you know, shown or seen to people. You know, my nights and weekends are looking at the budget books during this time of year. You know, it's very challenging, having children in school, being a Gloucester graduate myself. It's also very challenging balancing the budget with the fire, the DPW, the police, and everything that goes into making the city run. I know that people that work in the schools work very hard, as the same as the city people that work hard. We're a hard-working city, and that's great to see. It's just a very challenging budget. I do support the schools. That's why I've moved back here to have my children go to these great schools. I just wanted to have that for the record, and it is a very challenging, and everyone in the school works extremely hard all year round. Thank you.
Council Benson.
Thank you, Council President. A few things. First, I think the, number one, in my view, is what we're, what we're voting on today is education in our schools. We're, we're funding for our future. We're funding for the future of our community, the future of our state, the future of our country, and the future of our world. I think that's very important. I will say, this, to me, we look at not just here, but across the Commonwealth. Cities and towns are facing crunches with schools. We're seeing cuts in the city of Boston. We're seeing staff reductions across the board, across the Commonwealth. I will say, and I think spoken for two councillors here, is that we do need to ask our state delegation, and I urge the constituents as well, is to look at changing the law, reforming Chapter Seventy. I also would go into urging our constituents to call on our federal delegation to fund education more, more. We look at studies. I've read studies recently where we have seen an inadequate funding of a hundred and fifty billion dollars at the federal level for education. Hundred and fifty billion dollars across. That's not going into our education system. It's important, and I urge our constituents to think about that. As I think that I will be supporting this budget reluctantly, and I know everyone up here probably feels the same, because as someone who went through the public education system, someone who went through special education, and I value our paraprofessionals who helped move the needle for me in reading, math, et cetera. So I value everyone. But this is a very tough call, and it's, it's not easy. Thank you.
This is, this is a tough budget. You know, I worked with several budgets. I was chair of BNF on the school committee side. I did find, you know, some places and had some discussion about where they could have sharpened their pencils on this to save jobs. And that leaves me a little bit disappointed that that didn't happen before it came to us. I would also like to remind everybody, and this was a slide that was put forward during one of the public presentations, is that the Gloucester Public Schools will be, will be able, and this is with this budget, will be able to remain strong with, with so much, including small class sizes, pre-K to eight, focused on improving belonging, deepening, engaging, and increasing academic achievement. Robust social, emotional, and mental health support that provides, that provides staff and all school plus additional support with community partnerships located at our schools. All existing art, music, performing arts, physical education, and athletic programs will remain. All existing course offerings at the Gloucester High School, including all AP and honor options we have this year, depending on the final student course selection. So that depends upon, it's available, but it depends upon the enrollment in those classes. Continued support for instructional improvement, curriculum review, and implementation, and professional development. We will continue our increased support for English language learners and multilingual families. A stronger counseling staff at Gloucester High School with more capacity to support students' preparation for their next step after graduation. And finally, a commitment and leadership necessary to improve special education instruction practices and our in-district programming, strengthening evaluations, and placement processes. The development and needed new programs to support our students with disabilities. These schools will still do an exceptional job with this budget, and I want the citizens to realize that. Thank you.
Mr. President, could you share that screen for one minute for those that are at home or here, just so they can see it?
Madam Clerk.
Please.
Who have this, by the way? Yeah.
I know I do. I just wanted to have those here and those at home be able to just visually see it. Thank you.
And this was put out by the, by the school department. We did not write this. This was in the school committee's presentation on one of their presentations. I don't, you know, the purpose of this slide is to make sure that people understand that we still have exceptional staff, exceptional programs, exceptional schools, new, brand-new school buildings, new modular classrooms. We have facilities that have been well-maintained and, and a very strong achievement or reach for achievement with the curriculum. Okay, thank you. Any more discussion on this?
Counselor?
Yep.
Not to be controversial, but I just want to make a point that a lot of those issues were issues that were, reached out to the parents to let them know that, you know, we are, we're, we're okay, and we're going to do the best we can, but we still have twenty positions that we're cutting, of which some of them are pretty significant. So I don't want us to forget that we need to keep our eye on the prize to figure out what we can do long-term to help our schools with the special education budget and the unfunded mandates that we're experiencing. So I totally understand your point. We both served on the school committee.
Yes.
But I just wanted to, to make that clear. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Gro.
Yes.
Memhard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Worthley.
No.
The vote is eight in favor, one opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Fiscal year twenty-five general fund revenues. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty-five general fund revenues, including other financing sources, in the amount of one hundred and forty million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
And I so move.
Second. Sorry.
You're too late. Motion made by Councilor Memmard, seconded by Councilor Gro. Discussion.
This is on, this is on the, all the total revenues, right?
Ask any. Correct. Call the roll. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Gro.
Yes.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is eight in favor, one opposed. The motion passes.
The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favors, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty-five overlay reserved for abatements and exemptions in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memmard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Councilor Gro.
I have a question. Was there any discussion on whether or not the senior veterans tax work-off program was going to be initiated at some point? Because this is the same four hundred thousand dollars we do on a regular basis.
Correct. It's the same amount, but we're hopeful that this will cover also all the new exemptions that were recently approved in this fiscal year.
As far as the work-off, it was brought up at the meeting. To further answer your question, if that's okay. I think the mayor said holding off for one year.
Well, it doesn't affect, it's not involved in this either.
Okay.
That's not an abatement. That's a, that's a whole different.
Answered the question, but it was a different question.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
So the total net available net funds for fiscal year twenty-five is one hundred and thirty-nine million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The next item is Community Preservation Act funds, water, sewer, waterways, Talbot Rink and Enterprise Funds. So the next is Community Preservation Act. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year twenty-five revenues in the amount of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memmard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year twenty-five expenditures in the amount of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars as follows. Open Space Reserve, ninety-four thousand dollars. Community Housing Reserve, ninety-four thousand dollars. Historic Preservation Reserve, zero. Administration, forty-seven thousand dollars. Debt Service, Historic Preservation, two hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. General Reserve, five hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, for a total of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memmard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson. Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is the Water Enterprise Fund, Water Enterprise Appropriations, Department 450, Water. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the total fiscal year twenty-five Water Enterprise Appropriations as follows. Personal Services, two million, one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. Ordinary Maintenance, three million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Capital Outlay, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Debt Service, Other Financing Uses, two million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, for a total of eight million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memmard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is Water Enterprise Revenues. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve fiscal year twenty-five Water Enterprise Revenues as follows. Total revenues, eight million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memmard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is the Water Rate. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the fiscal year twenty-five water rate of eleven dollars and forty-two cents per thousand gallons for a twelve-month billing period effective July first, 2024, retroactive to April first, 2024.
This is a one-dollar or nine points, one-dollar or nine-point-six percent increase over the fiscal year 2025 water rate of ten dollars and forty-two cents per thousand gallons. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memmard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
No.
Counselor Benson.
No.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
No.
Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Vote is six in favor, three opposed. The motion passes.
Next is the. Next is the Sewer Enterprise Fund, Sewer Enterprise Appropriations, Department 440, Sewer. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 25 Sewer Enterprise Appropriations as follows. Personal Services, $1,978,053. Ordinary Maintenance, $5,666,479. Capital Outlay, $561,320. Debt Service, Other Financing Uses, $2,849,192, for a total of $11,055,044.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Memhard.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Sewer Enterprise Revenues. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 25 Sewer Enterprise Revenues as follows. Total revenues, $11,055,044.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Gilman.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is the Sewer Rate. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 25 Sewer Rate of $19.50 per 1,000 gallons for a 12-month billing period effective July 1, 2024, retroactive to April 1, 2024. This represents a $1.34 or 7.38 increase over fiscal year 24 Sewer Rate of $18.16 per 1,000 gallons.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
No.
Counselor Benson.
No.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
No.
Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Grow.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Counselor Nolan.
Aye.
Counselor Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is six in favor, three opposed. The motion passes.
Next is the votes on the Talbot Rink Enterprise Fund, Talbot Rink Enterprise Appropriations. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 25 Talbot Rink Appropriations as follows. Personal Services, $221,441. Ordinary Maintenance, $98,000. Capital Outlay, $7,000. Debt Service, Other Financing Uses, $28,462, for a total appropriation of $354,903.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Counselor Worthley.
Yes, thank you. On a couple of votes, it feels a little random, but maybe there's a method to it. There's been some dissenting votes, which I welcome, but there hasn't been any discussion about it, so I wondered if it'd be helpful to persuade your peers, so we can understand why.
Explain the reasons. We can talk about it.
It'd be helpful.
It's already.
We've already, we've already voted. Yeah, we've already, but for future reference. For future reference.
But if you mean going forward, sure.
Yes.
Fair enough.
And I think there's supposed to be a rationale.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I believe. All right. We have the motion and second. No discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Roll call.
Roll call. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Aye.
Counselor Grace.
Aye.
Counselor Gross.
Aye.
Counselor Gross.
Aye.
Counselor Mem.
Aye.
Counselor Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is the Talbot Rink Enterprise Revenues. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 25 Talbot Rink Enterprise Revenues as follows. Total revenues, $354,903.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion.
I just want to comment that this is actually very impressive that the rink is running in the black now, because there's a number of years where it wasn't, so it's partly DPW public properties, but also the staff that works there and integrating with some of the school programs to get kids skating more. And so it's just nice to see us not having to subsidize the rink because it's running evenly. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worthley. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is votes on the Waterways Enterprise Fund, Waterways Enterprise Appropriations. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 25 Waterways Enterprise Appropriations as follows. Personal Services, $337,388. Ordinary Maintenance, $242,650. Debt Service, Other Financing Uses, $13,674, for a total of $593,712.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is Waterways Enterprise Revenues. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the fiscal year 25 Waterways Enterprise Revenues as follows. Total revenues, $593,712.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Mem. Aye.
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 Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next is Revolving Funds in the Gloucester Public Schools Food Service. On a motion, sorry, by the, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council continue acceptance of the statute, Master General Law, Chapter 4453 E and 1/2, the School Department of Revolving Funds for fiscal year 25 as specified. Fund 0302 Summer School Program, $10,000. Fund 0305 Transportation, $200,000. 0306 ROTC, $125,000. Fund 0308 Preschool, $200,000. Fund 0309 Professional Development, $30,000. Fund 0311 Non-Resident Student Tuition, $130,000. Fund 0317 West Parish Before School Program, $35,000.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Counselor Worthley.
Could I have a, just a brief refresh on this again, where many times we have, school lunch is paid forward now by the, the spending limit thing. I, I've lost track of where this is. Could you?
School lunch is on another page, I believe.
Correct. That's two motions down. So the school revolving funds, these ones, these are essentially the city, they're dollar in, dollar out, and the spending limit, it just allows them to spend up to that amount. If they need to spend additional funds, they will come back to the City Council and ask for an increase for authorization of the spending limit.
To make it simpler, here's the preschool, preschool for an example, which is at $200,000. That means they're allowed to accept that much money in tuition, but then they also pay out, that goes to paying for staff and programs and things at the preschool. So it's just, it's not a budgeted item, it's, it's a spending limit.
Yeah. There's a user fee, there's a fee, there's a tuition amount. So those are, those are the receipts that they collect. And then, as Counsel Gross mentioned, that they're paying salaries, purchasing supplies to carry out the program.
Forgive me, I did vote for it, I'll vote for it again, I just forgot from, what, two months ago that we explained that. So thank you.
Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Now for the city revolving funds. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council authorizes the city to establish revolving funds for the certain city departments under Master General Law, Chapter 4453 E and 1/2, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, with specific receipts credited to each fund, the purposes for which each fund may be spent, and the maximum amount that may be spent for each fund for the fiscal year as specified. Fund 3100 Building Use, spending limit, $60,000. Fund 3104 City Hall User, $5,000. Fund 3105 Court Repairs, $2,088.5. Fund 3106 Septic Loan for the Board of Health, $15,000. Fund 3107 Vaccine, also part of Board of Health, $175,000. Fund 3111 Fire Training, $5,000. Fund 3112 Radio Frequency Review Study, $10,000. Fund 3114 Solid Waste Recycling, $10,000. Fund 3115 City Clerk Preservation of Permanent Records, $15,000. Fund 3117 Vacant Building, $80,000. Fund 3118 Planes Cove Fish Act, $3,500. Fund 3120 Various Fire Trainings, $15,000. Fund 3121 Newell Stadium Maintenance, $20,000. Fund 3122 Stage 4 Park Maintenance, $10,000. Fund 3123 Police Student Officer Training and Equipment, $35,000. Fund 3124 Fire Decontamination Drill Training, $5,000.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Okay, the last revolving fund, the fiscal year 25 School Food Service Revolving Fund. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council appropriate $2 million for the fiscal year 25 operating costs of the Gloucester School Food Service Program, and $2 million for estimated receipts for the services provided by the Gloucester Food Service Program in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter 4453 E.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. On this, Counsel Worthley mentioned that the state is doing the school meals program. This allows us to accept the money from the state, put it in an account, and then the, the School Food Service Department can spend it.
Thank you for the reminder. In the right line item, too.
Oh, any more discussion? No? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk. Motion to adjourn.
I have a closing statement on that. Sorry.
Goodbye.
Oh, people want to make, they'll want to make a comment.
All right. Go ahead. Counselor Memhard.
Do I have your permission?
Counselor Memhard.
Put up with it a little more?
Please.
Change my glasses.
Can you clean them, too?
These are the closing remarks on the city's budget from the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. On behalf of the city of Gloucester, the fiscal year 2025 budget for the General Fund, Community Preservation Act, and the four enterprise funds totals approximately $162 million, and that's an increase of approximately $7.5 million and 4.88% from the fiscal year 2024 budget, last year's budget. And this reflects our increasing fixed costs, such as pension obligations, debt, service, healthcare, paving, school building,
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. On this, as Counselor Worthley mentioned, that the state is doing the School Meals Program. This allows us to accept the money from the state, put it in an account, and then the, the School Food Service Department can spend it.
Thank you for the reminder. In the right line item, too.
Oh, any more discussion? No? Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Memhard.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to the BNF for all the hard work that you have gone through since the budget, and also to the administration for presenting this budget. And I will not reiterate what I said earlier about the schools, but just a broad brush is continue to make sure we're putting pressure on our state legislature and our federal legislature, and remember that the funding there, there's some issues there. Also, I will say is to, as we continue to move forward, we have to do growth, a smart, common sense development, development that works within the character of our community and the character of our neighborhoods, and also when we're doing, when we're doing, continuing to try to find growth, we don't do it on the backs of working class people. Thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. Firstly, thank you to Kenny Costa, our auditor. You continue to teach me, and I appreciate that, and I don't think I'll ever catch up to you, but I still appreciate you trying. To my colleagues on budget and finance, Scott and Tony, not only do I appreciate the long hours, but bringing me along, this is my third one, but you both, both have been part of many more budgets than I have, and I'm still learning, and I appreciate that. You know, the commentary about, you know, we had a real estate attorney saying we should be supporting more development, and I think we should be, but when we talk about the budget, it was Jack Clark and Janice Tullow who did the presentation that said, for every dollar we collect in residential taxes, we spend a dollar fourteen, so the long run,